Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It is now six o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education Work Session to order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented? A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Ms. North, second by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Six to zero. We will now recognize visitors who would like to address the board. Do we have any visitors? Okay. No visitors tonight. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Cabinet Updates. Dr. Oats?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We do have a presentation this evening that I've requested that I think is a very, very timely and important one. And it will be a presentation and some updates and some information on our literacy efforts. And we have four ladies here who hold important roles and positions relative to our district's literacy focus. And I will say that this is the only formal presentation slated for this evening. And so what I wish to say to our board and our executive cabinet members and guests is this will be a slightly protracted presentation. Because if you think about it, we typically have multiple presentations for the work session. This will be in time equivalent to that because there are several programs and items that they'll be reporting out on. So thank you so much, ladies, for your availability.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, and her absence, members of the board, Dr. Oats, our cabinet members, and our guests. I bring you greetings from the Division of Teaching and Learning under the leadership of our Chief Academic Officer, Mrs. Shirley Chesser. I am Shanita Russell, our district's Language and Literacy Coordinator, and I have the pleasure of starting our conversation off tonight to talk about not only what reading is, but how and why we learn and what shifts we were able to make in instructional practices, and also how we're training and supporting our teachers so that they can better serve our students. There is some good news. Ninety-five percent of our students can learn to read. Here's the caveat. In order for that reading to take place, instruction must be rooted in the science of reading along with those literacy programs that are used to supplement and enhance that instruction. Often times when we think about reading, we view it as this simple act or this simple process of just opening up a book and reciting the words that are on the page. Reading is far more complex than that. What happens is simultaneously multiple tasks have to happen in what's known as that reading brain in order for authentic reading to take place. What I want you to think about in terms of that is that reading is not how the brain is wired. It's actually wired to speak. And so when our littles come to us at ages between the ages of four and six, they have oral language that they started with first, right? And depending on how complex that language is that they were loved in in their home environment, the instructors have to work to first wire, but then sometimes rewire that brain to learn how to read. And so our literacy instruction must consist of the five pillars of early literacy. That's how we're able to teach our students to read and write in a way that they have multiple opportunities to practice with hearing and producing sounds in words so that they're able to read more accurately and quickly enough that they can understand and make meaning of that text. So that's what true authentic reading is, and that's really the science behind reading. What's important to note in addition to that is that there have been some major shifts in literacy. So as complex as that whole reading process is, the expectation now is for students to engage in texts beyond the surface level. So as they're reading, they're not just being asked surface-level questions of what color is the blue ball. They're now expected to engage in complex text. And what they're expected to do with that text is to have experiences that allow them to respond to text-dependent questions in both literary and informational texts. The expectation for those students is that they're able to take that knowledge from that text and cite strong textual evidence in response to what they read. And as early as kindergarten, students are expected to engage in content-rich nonfiction. So the expectation for our four-, five-, six-year-olds is that they are reading informational texts, gaining knowledge from that text, and then applying that to a task. That's a lot. And we understand that students who have some reading challenges and are at promise are going to need some support, and our state recognizes that as well. So in response to that support that our students are going to need, our state has developed two very high-profile bills. The first one is Senate Bill 48, which is our dyslexia law. And what you see here on your screen are the expectations for schools to respond to those laws, those key components. Our district has also provided response to that. So the characteristics of dyslexia and utilizing screeners, we have started that process of training all K-5 leaders and central office personnel on how to effectively screen students who may be demonstrating characteristics of dyslexia. And starting as early as January, we're also going to train our K-5 instructors. Also, the expectation is that teachers receive training in the science of reading. And so we've offered over the past three years the dyslexia endorsement. We started with training our literacy support staff to work with those students who are most at promise, and now we are moving into a space of broadening that scope. And so in response to the expectation that at least one person in the building is dyslexia endorsed, our district over the past three years is ensuring that every building in our K-5 building in our district has at least three key personnel individuals who are dyslexia endorsed and can support those students who need further assistance. Working in tandem with Senate Bill 48 is House Bill 538, which is the drawl. I'm sorry, I missed this slide. The timeline that they gave us for Senate Bill 48, over the past three years, seven districts across the state of Georgia have served as pilot schools or districts. And what they have done is they have provided training to their teachers, practiced administering screeners. They've also onboarded resources and programs that are rooted in the science of reading and support this dyslexia law. The state is using that comprehensive report from each one of those schools, pilot district schools, to provide further guidance for all districts in the state of Georgia. Working in tandem with that is House Bill 538. This is Georgia's Early Literacy Act. And again, the key components to that legislation are on your screen, and our district's work and support is identified there as well. So as I shared, we have provided screener training to key personnel, and we'll continue to do that throughout the upcoming months. And in addition to just a dyslexia endorsement, we're offering daytime models that are training our teachers in other literacy endorsements and pathways. We're not just highlighting teachers. We're also working with support staff, our paraprofessionals, and our administrators in each building. Here are some important dates that the state has identified with key components to that House bill. And if you notice on your screen, those legends there, those with the check mark are those action items that have already been approved and implemented. Anything with those dots are things that are in progress. Please know that your district literacy team is working very closely with our state literacy partners so that we're receiving real-time updates as they are approving items, action items on the list, and as they are releasing approved resources and training that we can offer to our teachers and our support staff. Just as the state has a plan, your district is ready. We have a plan as well. Our district literacy team has developed our birth-to-grade 12 comprehensive literacy plan. What you see identified here are the key components to that plan, and we want you to know that it is aligned with the expectations of the state. It supports our district's mission, vision, and core beliefs, and it satisfies our strategic plan Goal Area Two. So we put all of that information together to come up with a training plan and support for our literacy instructors. Again, it's not germane just to our teachers. We're including our administrators and our support staff. And so what does that literacy instruction look like? Well, for our grades fourth through 12th grade teachers, they are receiving training on the overview of the science of reading. Science of reading is a forty years' worth of research, the body of evidence that shows how and why we learn to read. As a part of their training, they learn about these three key anchors that has emerged from that research. So they learn about Golf and Tumnner's Simple View of Reading. It's an equation. And they learn how to put those numbers into that equation to determine based on how the two factors of word recognition and language comprehension, whatever percentage of proficiency our students have in those elements equals the percentage of proficiency that they have in reading comprehension. On top of the Simple View of Reading is Scarborough's Reading Rope. And so Scarborough did further research to say, in addition to these two factors, that word recognition and that language comprehension, there are some sub-skills that live under there. And with those sub-skills, students need to acquire that particular knowledge. So our teachers that are undergoing this training, they learn how to look at those sub-skills and inform their instructional decisions based on what support students need in each one of those strands. Addition to that, they learn about the four-part processing model. So remember when I talked about that reading brain and how as a student is reading, simultaneously a lot of tasks are happening in what's known as that reading brain? And all parts of that reading brain need to be activated in order for that student to acquire those skills that are identified by Scarborough and Golf and Tumnner and for them to become that skilled proficient reader. What you see here on your screen is a visual representation of those three big anchors. And again, I said that the Simple View of Reading is that equation, and those factors have to go together in order for that student to be 100% skilled proficient reader. If you look at the top left of your screen, if you look at the Scarborough's Reading Rope with the overlay of those five pillars of early literacy, you'll notice that true fluency does not start to happen for a student until those sub-skills under word recognition and language comprehension start to come together. And there's still a process that students undergo to actually get to reading comprehension. Those four parts of that processing model, remember, we want students to have learning experiences that activate all parts of that reading brain every time they read and write and are immersed in text. And we're training our fourth through 12th grade teachers how to do that. We want their literacy approach to instruction to be rooted in the structured literacy. What research has said is that structured literacy also helps to support students who have characteristics of dyslexia. And so our look-for's and our shifts in practice, we're expecting for our teachers to provide direct explicit instruction that's systematic, comprehensive, and consists of those five early literacy pillars. Our pre-K through third grade teachers and administrators and key central office staff are also undergoing some science of reading training known as Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading, formerly commonly known around here as letters. And as you look at those learning outcomes on the screen, I just want to highlight a couple. In addition to acquiring some knowledge and skills, they're doing practical application. So they work with a case study of students to apply those strategies and instructional shifts that they're learning about, and then they will then transfer that to their entire class as they acquire the necessary skills. And then our next big science of reading component is that dyslexia endorsement. We're pleased to let you know that we offer a daytime model so that we're able to provide that training to more teachers and support staff. The learning outcomes are there for you. So again, our participants in the dyslexia endorsement, they are gaining that knowledge of what the law says and then how to apply that to support students who are most at promise. Majority of those students were able to serve right there in the general classroom. Here's our literacy training journey. And what you see here over the screen is that there has been a lot of literacy training and support that we provided to our teachers. What's important to note here is that starting in that 2021 school year, we were in the pandemic, and we have paused for celebration that we were not only able to offer but sustain this literacy training and support to our teachers. As we started this process, we targeted specific grade levels and specific teachers. And then in response to expectations from our state, we've broadened that scope to now serve all teachers pre-K through grade 12 and also those support staff individuals. You'll notice here that we are working very closely with our Metro Risa partners to make revisions to disciplinary literacy and the reading endorsement to make sure that it is also aligned with the science of reading. Our evening cohort is piloting out those revisions in the reading endorsement, and we expect to broaden that scope in the upcoming year. In addition to providing those particular sets of science of reading training, we are going to work in concert with the state to offer these literacy models here for those teachers who are not currently involved in our pathways and endorsements. So we have outlined, they've outlined in conjunction with Rollins Center and Cox Campus to go through these learning modules to get more information, more support, and more knowledge to support students in the science of reading and structured literacy. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McGlocken to talk about early intervention specialists.
Good evening. I'm Charlene McGlocklin. I'm one of the literacy coordinators that works with early literacy intervention. Thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak with you all about some things that's going on with us on the early literacy side of intervention. On the elementary level, we have thirteen trained elementary literacy specialists. Our literacy specialists are teachers who have specialized training and focus on enhancing literacy among students. These individuals support classroom teachers on implementing effective literacy instructional strategies. Their role helps to ensure that all students develop strong foundational skills in reading and writing. We began our early literacy specialist journey back in school year 2122, and we trained our literacy specialists in reading recovery. And reading recovery is an early literacy intervention, and it's a short-term intervention that lasts anywhere from 12 to 20 weeks. The goal of reading recovery is to reduce the number of first-grade students who struggle with reading and writing. This intervention takes place in a one-on-one setting, and it is a thirty-minute lesson, and our teachers have seen some very great gains from our work in reading recovery. Our literacy specialists also obtained a reading endorsement that year, and the reading endorsement also allows our specialists to have instructional strategies to help our struggling readers and also help the teachers implement those strategies to help them in the classroom. This year, we have implemented dyslexia training for our elementary reading specialists. They're also going through letters, as Ms. Russell mentioned, that's the science of reading training. So we wanted to make sure that our elementary literacy specialists were well-versed in several specialized reading training so that they're able to better serve our students and our teachers. When we started our journey with our literacy specialists, our very first year, we were able to serve ninety-nine students in reading recovery. And last year, we were able to increase that number to one hundred and fifty students served in reading recovery. We also served second-grade students in EIP. The first year was one hundred and forty-four students. Last year, we served three hundred and eight students, second-grade students in EIP. Right now, we have fifty-four students. We're serving this first semester in reading recovery. That number will increase during our second semester, and we're also serving about three hundred second-grade students in EIP. So I wanted to share a little bit about our student growth in our intervention program. So what you see on the screen is one of our current reading recovery students. She entered the program in August, reading what we call the text level of zero. So if you look at the image on your left, you see it's very predictable text. It's only three words on the page, and the student can read that by just looking at the picture, okay? So in November, this same student is now on a text level of thirteen after just three months in the program, and you can look at the difference in the text. You have very complex text now. You have multi-syllabic words, multiple lines of text on the page. Although there is a picture, the picture really won't help the student. The student really needs to know how to read in order to read at a text level at that thirteen. So we're very proud of some of the progress that we've seen with our reading recovery students. This same student, this is her writing. In August, she came in writing about ten words. If you look on your left, about ten words independently, including her name. And you can see that most of the letters are reversals, a mixture of uppercase and lowercase letters, no sense of directionality, no word orientation. But now in November, she writes over a hundred words on her own. You see there is a real sentence there, sentence structure, appropriate spacing, no more reversals in the letters, appropriate spacing between words, and evidence of a structured sentence. So this is just some of the progress and growth that we're able to see in our students through one of our intervention programs of reading recovery. Thank you.
Good evening, and it is indeed a pleasure to be before you all tonight in a new role, serving as the L4GA grant coordinator. So I want to share a little bit with you tonight about our literacy grant, Rockdale Reads. We originally got the grant in 2021. So hopefully you hear a bell and a theme ringing around 2021, and we had to make some shifts. So the application process, we actually started, submitted the application February of 2020 was the deadline, and we know what happened in March of 2020. So the first cohort of schools are listed there, and we had to separate them out because the grant required that we do them by cluster schools. So we started with our Salem cluster, including their middle schools and elementary schools, and then also Rockdale County High School. The state opened up another round of applications. So we submitted again in that fall, and we were able to submit for our remaining cluster, which being our Heritage High School cluster of schools. We are, and if y'all noticed where we are right now, put a little circle there so you can see where we are. And if you look at the key, it says the counties or school systems that have the multiple stripes in them have multiple grants. And I would say, just based on some of my research and talking around the literacy world, we're one of the few systems that actually have grants for all of our schools. So I just want to make sure that that is known, that we have all of our schools. The grant period actually is scheduled to end September 30th, 2024, so we are a little bit less than a year away. Right now, they are saying that we will have about thirty days after the grant ends to actually liquidate and submit completion reports. I got word a little bit, what's today, Thursday, on Tuesday, that there's a possibility that they may offer to extend that grant, but an application has to be made to the U.S. Department of Ed to extend the grant so that it now covers all of the next, that following fiscal year going, and extend it to June 30th of 2025. Within the grant, there are, there were specific goals and purposes outlined from the state. And so I just want to share a few of these with you, and so you'll kind of see how those funds have been allocated towards resources since we've had the grant. One of the first ones is providing high-quality materials in both print and digital format that our students, again, including from birth to 12th grade, receive an evidence-based literacy block. And within that literacy block, in that comprehensive program, you'll hear some of the things that Ms. Russell mentioned from small group reading interventions, making sure that they have explicit instruction around comprehension and vocabulary, and engaging in high-quality text. I skipped the one about the science of reading, but most definitely is in the science of reading. And I'm going to say all of this came back out in, we did the grant in 2020, 2018, 2019. So the science of reading has been out there, and we knew it was coming, so it was how do we make preparations to make sure we're ready to address the shift around the science of reading? And then that last one is very important, that students also receive evidence-based instruction in literacy in all content areas. So we're not just talking about the world of ELA. That's our students receive support across the board in all content areas. Here's the layout of what Congress has earmarked funding as. So you can see fifteen percent went to early literacy. That will be our birth to five, age five, and so that's part of the program that Ms. Shawna Miller oversees with the grant funds. Forty percent went to kindergarten, grades K through five. Twenty percent of funding was earmarked for middle school and twenty percent for our high schools. Five percent of the grants went to grant administration, and that is one of the areas in which my position as the grant coordinator now falls under. I also want to point out just a couple of things under districts may use funding to hire, because I will make a reference to this coming back as well. Definitely that second bullet as not just student learning, but student learning and also thinking about the whole child support. So we use the grant to support different things, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, that supports the whole child along with professional learning and build the capacity of our professionals, families, and community organizations. So I want to highlight, and I broke it down into three key areas about how our funding has been used and will continue to be used over the next year or so, and looking at human resources. So you heard Ms. Russell mention a lot about our professional learning. And so through the grant, we've been able to provide substitutes for teachers to receive that training during the day. We also provide stipends because we realize a lot of times some of this work may take place and extend beyond the day for teachers to do some of that planning. So we also provide stipends so when they're participating in things like the science endorsement, the dyslexia endorsement, the gifted endorsement, we are all paying them a stipend in addition to. Believe it or not, we were also able to hold, because this was already in the plan, in our first year of the grant, to hold a virtual literacy summit. Because that was our first year, we want to make sure we went ahead and gained traction in what we were doing and promoting Rockdale Reads. Another area is being able to hire instructional coaches. And if you notice there, and this is straight from the Georgia Department of Education, if they're hired with L4GA funds, they must work directly with teachers and helping teachers to improve their practices around pedagogy and instructional strategies. You heard Ms. McGlocklin speak about elementary literacy specialists, so we have provided some support there with them. Schools are also, not just from the training side, but schools are also being able to hire additional paraprofessionals out of the L4GA grant. Tutors, I can tell you for certain, I know Ms. Miller has presented before, and she's highlighted things around her tutors and knowing how the work around tutors with those pre-K students and getting them ready to enter kindergarten and the results that she's seeing there. One thing I do want to highlight when I spoke about the whole child, we also use the grant to help support fund a school-based mental health therapist, and that's Ms. Juanez Miller. And I just want to highlight, I did reach out to her because I want to kind of get a feel for what are some of the things that she's been working on and what she's actually seeing. And so just to share a little bit, she actually works with students both as an individual. She also works with a family, and she also works with students in small groups. Some of the areas in which she has been supporting students with includes anger management, depression with or without suicidal ideation, anxiety, attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, oppositional behavior, just getting adjusted to school, and grief. So right now, she has roughly about fifty-two students that she's meeting with and she works with. Sometimes she's meeting with those students either at least once a week, sometimes two to three times a week, depending on what their needs are. Learning resources, and I know this is what y'all are used to seeing me for, but learning resources, part of the grant is really about getting students to read, not only our students, but actually putting books in the hands of our families and community members. So books have been distributed to both students, families, and throughout the community, being through some of the lunch bus, summer lunch bus routes that we put books in. You'll see a couple of the other things when we get to the community as well. Myon, which is a digital book platform that students have the opportunity to go in and and can select their own books, because part of the goal becomes that they are able to read independently on their grade level. So even if we have those at promise students, they're able now to select books on their grade level, while most of the time we'll see that the teacher are using on-grade level books. So having those books to read at my individual level allows the students to feel some type of success as they are are reading. Uh, we've also we've also used some of the funds to provide leveled libraries. Um, you hear a lot about the intervention plans that the schools have had in place and they've been working on. So those leveled libraries, again, will allow students and teachers to be able to work with students in small groups that they have a variety of books to select from to be able to meet the students of the variety of reading levels that they may have within their classrooms. Um, math by the book is one of those that we purchased this year, so as the new math standards have been rolling out, but it does embed some of those literacy skills and giving the students the opportunity to read, but they're also learning about the math and the numbers as well. Uh, the book vending machines, you can see there is an example of a picture of the book vending machines. Um, and one thing that I know Mr. Gray has brought to you all before is implementing uh ThinkCirca in grades nine through twelve for high school. Definitely to address more so the writing, so thinking about comprehension piece. Uh, and reading comprehension is not just the reading part, but also being able to to write. Uh, then some of those digital resources, including accelerated reader. Uh, vocabulary, not sure if you heard about vocabulary, but it is where the students get an opportunity to learn through uh the different content areas, but learn it through uh music, which we know is very engaging for our students. Uh, they also have an opportunity to maybe even write their own songs uh through rap or different music. Uh, we also have Freckle, I X L, Lexia, and Neopod. And lastly, looking at some community resources, I did mention before about the summer book uh book distribution. Uh, we've also done some things at Parent Academy and given them the opportunity to do Make It, Take It Bags, where they can kind of put together some resources for the students uh and what they need at home. Bachelor School Bash, the Conyers Latin Festival, the Literacy Pop-Up Frosty Five K, which is done with Phoenix Pass, and also put in books as well within the doctor's offices and hospital.
So I have the opportunity of coming to you last, um, just to give you a sneak peek, because I'll be back in January. But what I want to share with you today is in addition to all of the work that our literacy team is doing to provide training that aligns with the state expectations, to make sure that we're providing the support to the teachers, the leaders, and the other adults in the building that are working with students. We are also gearing up to roll out our new E L A standards um that the state has so nicely given to us right after our math standards. So as a district, we're aware that our K through five teachers are currently working through their math implementation um with their new math resource. And so what we've decided to do as a district is to start our process, because we recognize that new standards take time. We don't officially roll our standards out until the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So we will begin in twenty-four, meaning January, with our slow start of im- implementation rollout. Okay, so beginning January twenty-four, all the way through the end of the twenty-five school year, we will be focusing on professional learning to make sure that our teachers can make that crosswalk, right? The connection between where was this in the old standard? And where is it now in the new standard? And one thing that I will highlight with our standards change is that the phonics expectation, which used to live in grades K through two, has now rolled up to grades K through three. So the work that we've been doing to train our teachers on the science of reading, which included teachers in third grade, well before the standards were ready for us, was intentional. Um, we are truly, truly preparing ourselves to be able to take these new standards without losing any time. And that's the most important piece for our teachers, is that we'll be ready to go in twenty-five, twenty-six. When the state says, ready, set, go, our CPS will say, ready, set, let's take the lead. So we appreciate your support, we appreciate um the feedback. But more importantly, we appreciate your understanding where we are and rolling out these new standards behind our math standards, recognizing what that looks like for our K five teachers who teach all content areas, and supporting us along the way as we will refine the plan to make sure that it is palatable, digestible, and transferred in the classrooms with our students. This is our literacy team, and I bring you greetings. And I am closing this out and turning it over to you all for any questions that you might have for our dynamic team.
Questions?
I do have a question. So with the science of reading, um, is there a certificate or some type of certification that teachers will get?
Good evening again. Yes, ma'am. The teachers who are participating in the dyslexia endorsement, of course, at the end of that program, they receive that endorsement on their teaching certificate. Those that we are going to provide training through those modules on Cox Campus, they do receive a certificate at the completion of each module um that they can then be recognized that they are completing the expectations that our state has put forth.
And you probably don't know this, but I'm thinking out loud, you may, you may know it. So with the um science of reading training, um, someone said that training takes place during the day.
Yes.
Right? So I was trying to, I guess I would like to know if you all know this. How many um instructional days during the day will those trainings take place? Like where the teachers will be removed from the classroom?
It varies depending on the literacy pathway or endorsement that they are undertaking. And we did take that into consideration during our planning and implementation. Um, with the endorsements, they, uh, participants complete a hundred and fifty hours of coursework that equates to fifteen days of instruction with the facilitators. Um, and so we do have that manageable for them, depending on, again, the endorsement, whether it's a full day worth of training or a half day of training that they receive from us in-house. Um, and then to support that, again, we have worked to put together what we call identified as pathway subs, so that each teacher has the same sub each time that they're going to be out. Um, and then for all of the trainings that we're offering, our entire uh teaching and learning division comes together to map out how many teachers, we looked at that, how many teachers are really going to be out of the classroom in any particular grade level, and made the necessary adjustments so that it's not so weighted in one grade level or another, and it's not impacting a school having, you know, seven, eight teachers out on the same day, the same time. Yes, ma'am.
And my last question is, and I know that you all have considered this, but I'm just asking just to confirm. Um, when, when scheduling these trains, you are collaborating with local school administrators
Yes.
to make sure that um there's balance with trainings, because there are, there are trainings or P Ls and meetings that takes place at the local school.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So we provide, um, when we come together during our planning time at the top of the year, and we start to identify what training and support we want to provide to teachers. We then provide that information to our building leaders. They're given the opportunity to have, we provide them with a one-page description of each training that we're offering, and they're given the autonomy to select the teachers in their buildings that are best suited for those pathways or endorsements that we're offering. Um, and we do give that caveat to them that do not select one person to go through multiple, you know, endorsements or pathways, and then think about the other offerings that you have in your building. And so if you're doing something intentional in your building and you prefer not to have all of your teachers participate, we do give them that autonomy and the flexibility.
Thank you very much. Lots of good information, lots of good valuable information, lots of the, a lot of the programs that you all have, um, that you all have discussed, I'm familiar with. So, great information.
Thank you.
I want to piggyback off uh Ms. Jones's question. Uh, I'm hearing, not complaints, I mean, it's the nature of the beast, that when new standards come out, you know, especially in math and reading, and they're coming out in the same years and that uh in the same year, and teachers are having to undergo tremendous training. Uh, they're having meetings on how to implement these new standards, and it's cutting into planning time. Are there any efforts at county office to assist teachers in possible uh boilerplate lesson plans that are tailored to the new standards that county office could send to teachers to take a, a, just a little bit of the burden of this new implementation off of them?
So I'm always going to say anything is possible, okay? But what I will share is that the state is also pushing out a law on the Godot website. Um, they have a suitcase, is what they're calling it, and that is full of a plethora of resources, which include activities, um, suggests, suggested resources that we could be using, and some lesson plan examples. It is still being built. We are hopeful that by twenty-five, twenty-six, it'll be ready to go so that we can use that as a model as well. But to your question, is our CPS in a space where we are creating lesson plans as a teaching and learning division? Today, the answer is no, but anything is possible, and we are using the state as a guide to help us with that shift, because the E L A standards are completely different um than what we've been doing for the last five years. They are very similar to the math standards in terms of the framework. And so we are excited that we're coming behind math, because it does give them a little bit more time on the state level to line those um resources up for us. But I will definitely share that at our next class meeting as well, that that is something that districts are looking for support with um to assist their teachers with delivering tier-one instruction. So thank you for the question.
Uh, let me, if I may, as a personal producer, I want to commend our literacy team. And I, uh, when I spoke with, yes, definitely, amazing, amazing team. When I spoke with Ms. Chester about this, I do know that she had already had it planned in next semester for there to be a similar presentation, but I thought it would be timely to, to have this conversation now. And I think what this helps us uh frame is the, the depth and breadth of the support and the degree of proactive, the proactive posture that our Teaching and Learning Division took uh in seeing the science of reading years before it actually made its way into being codified as legislation. So I want to thank you ladies, because I know you work exceedingly hard. And, and, and it was somewhat of a news flash, uh, Andrea, about the uh possibility of the extension of the L four G A grant, because I talked to Shirley about that, and she was telling me about when it is scheduled to end, but now there's a possibility we can apply, right? Is, is, it would automatically roll over if they approved it. Okay, I got you. So I'm excited about that. So thank you, ladies. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Question by the state. Welcome back, Andrea. And um looking from my seat and looking at the five of you guys, I know that we're in good hands. Thank you so much. This was a great presentation. And I'm, I'm just so hopeful about what you guys have brought in front of us and what you're about to offer our students, because there's five powerhouse sitting in front of us. Thank you so much.
Indeed.
I call you guys our dream team. But I also want to um thank you for your presentation tonight and give a shout out to the Kiwanis Club. Dr. Oats and I had the opportunity to um attend one of their meetings, and they are getting ready to uh support us in our literacy um efforts and giving out books to our local elementary schools. And so I want to give a shout out to the Kiwanis Club. Thank you.
Indeed. Thank you. And Madam Chair, when we have our distinguished, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sandra. Absolutely, absolutely. Excellent support and services from the Kiwanis Club. Uh, Phil, I think you're up next from operations.
Good evening, Madam Chair Brown and and I'm Chair Vice Chair Duncan, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Oats. I have two action items this evening. The first one is, how'd y'all do that? I saw you doing this, something like this, and I'm saying automatically. I'm kind of learning all the secrets, make things move. Uh, the facility, Salem High School and Heritage High School Tennis Courts. So I came to you last summer, and these were the two courts that were outstanding for work to be done. And so tonight, Bruce was able to give us some information, we're able to move a lot quicker uh to get these uh courts going. So Superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of signature tennis courts as the contractor for the rebuild of the four tennis courts at Salem High School and Heritage High School. The Salem High School call rebuild is a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. The Heritage High School rebuild cost is one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And this pricing is from our community code nine one two three five dash C zero zero five. And this agreement is contingent upon a superintendent's and general counsel's review. So these courts are in need of repair and resurfacing. This work will conclude the repurposing of all of our district middle and high courts. Uh, the rebuild is scheduled to be completed, this is the good part about this, before our upcoming tennis season begins. Uh, pickleball lines are also being part of this rebuild. The exterior of the Heritage High School overall court space will be modified to allow, to allow future site growth of the facility without impacting the courts. So we're talking about the south end of the courts, there's more space there than they need. But that's where we would put in addition in the future at Heritage High School. So that's the, the difference in the cost there, and for a total of three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars from East Blosst five. My second action item is the purchase of a vehicle. Before I go into my action item, I wanted to share a little history of some work that uh that has happened over the years. Uh, Jonathan Paul brought this to my attention, so I thought, well, it's good, good information to share. Back in two thousand, we purchased a vehicle for the superintendent. Uh, and we just retired that vehicle two months ago. Has two hundred and three thousand miles on it. And then we had a uh twenty, uh, two thousand and five that we are still operating. It's the one that Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Parker and uh Dr. King drove. It's got a hundred and fifty-six thousand miles on it, and we're still using that. And then we have the uh, a Tahoe that has two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three miles on it as of yesterday. And that was uh Dr. King's vehicle, and then Mr. Autry used that vehicle. And then we have the vehicle that uh I'm driving, has a hundred and three thousand miles on it, which Mr. Autry and Dr. Oats began that vehicle when he came to our system. And so the one that we have tonight is the recommendation I'm presenting to the board. And so along with our fleet upgrade criteria, and so I, it's time that we get this in motion. That's why I'm bringing it tonight. Superintendent recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe at a purchase price not to exceed sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars from bid number two zero two four zero zero one zero from Hardy's Automotive Fleet Group. This vehicle will be assigned to our superintendent. The current uh vehicle designated for the superintendent was purchased in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Based on the school system vehicle replacement roll-down plan, this vehicle should be replaced by the mileage and the years of service. And this financial impact will be sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars out of our East Blosst five. And that's it.
End question. Thank you, Mr. Phil.
I have a question. So you say, so how many miles on the car that we're about to retire?
The one we're rolling down?
Yeah.
Forty-five thousand plus miles, forty-five thousand plus.
It's not retiring though.
We're rolling down.
Yeah, the one that rolling down. Yes, yes, ma'am.
That's what about that?
Yeah. The first one we had, uh, that type of vehicle is being used today with two hundred and some thousand miles on it, and we're still using it on a daily basis for our courier service. And so what we've tried to do is we go forward, purchase some vehicles, is to purchase vehicles that can have multi uses as they, as we roll them down. And that one has that provision where we let it sit down, it's got a good cargo van, and it actually has worked in uh Mr. Hall's division.
Right. And Phil, let me say this, I, I appreciate the fact, um, you, as you know, uh, we have some citizens who have some questions for clarification on this process. So I do appreciate the fact that you took the, the additional time to explain the process. Uh, this is a process that's been in place for over two decades. Uh, and the, when you focus on the, the mileage, it, it is a roll-down piece, and it will accumulate. It will be fully utilized because of the structure of roll-down. So it's not that we, we had a vehicle forty-five thousand, now we're going, no, it's rolling down, and it will get to that high mileage that you have indicated for one of the.
That's correct. And the reason for that, this timeframe, we did a lot of study back to that date and time to find out what's the best time for rollover or roll down. And the fact is that vehicle would normally come to my position or one of our director's positions that are in a, you know, in a high mileage volume before we roll it into a daily, just local mileage uh condition. And I believe it was April twenty twenty-two, I believe it was, when I shared with the board an extensive usage of how this roll-down process works for school buses, uh, all of our fleet vehicles, uh, including the superintendent's vehicle, how that worked. And uh, I think that's, that's a, it was a PowerPoint presentation I shared back then.
And Phil, I appreciate you sharing that with me, and I did share that. And Phil, I appreciate you sharing that with me. And I did share that with those of our citizens who requested more information about the process for how those determinations.
Okay. And the process that's embedded into East Bloss as well.
Yes, that's correct.
That it's, yeah.
That's correct.
Not a, it's not a.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Phil.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair Duncan, Board Members and Dr. Oats. I'll be going over the preliminary financial statements for the month of October. The revenue for the month of October is twelve point six million. The revenue year to date is forty point nine million, which is twenty point four percent of our budget. The revenue last over October, I said over October, last year was twelve point nine million, thirty nine point five million year to date, which was twenty one point eight percent of our budget. Our tax revenue has started coming in. We didn't receive as much this, this October as we did last year, but that will catch up. By December, we should have ninety five percent of all our tax revenue in. All right. Expenditures for October eighteen point four million, sixty nine point three million year to date, which is thirty three point eight percent of our budget. Last October, we expended fifteen point three million, sixty point five million year to date, which was thirty two point five percent of our budget. Outstanding encumbrances, two million four hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars. Fund balance at the end of October, approximately seven point eight million. Last year, we approximately seventeen point seven million. Assets approximately thirteen point eight, liability six million. Those are our third party payments and then our fund balance is seven point eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may share just a moment, you know, we're at the point now where when you look at our annual achievement data, it's, it tends to be a salagin indicator just on the basis of when the data come in, right? And so we are nearing that final finish line of all of our two thousand twenty two, twenty three data coming in. And of course, we, we kind of can go all the way back and look at the summer when the milestones data is coming in. We can also look at CTAE data as well. There's a lot of other data, both quantitative and qualitative data. And so now we're at the point where we're beginning that end stage of where we would get our CCRPI indicator level data. Now I've shared with our board previously and I'll share with our public and our viewing audience who are tuning in remotely is that we are at a stage where we have four indicators, actually five, but there are four main indicators. And those indicators, of course, are content mastery, closing the gaps, progress and readiness. And those indicators are applicable for all levels, elementary, middle and high. Of course, when you look at high school separately, you have a fifth indicator that you add to that, which is graduation rate. And so over the next few weeks, we will be getting our accountability data by way of our indicator level data. And as I said, we have, we have already received content mastering, closing the gap. And we should be receiving progress as early as next week and readiness as early as after Thanksgiving. However, all of this data will be embargoed until early December. I corresponded with our Deputy Superintendent for Assessment and Accountability at the DOE, Allison Timberlake, this week, and she confirmed that it is embargoed until early December. What I can tell you is, is that the preliminary data is showing that we've made some gains over the previous years in terms of at each indicator level. And that's a point of pride because that's also a goal. That's the goal of ours, whether you're talking about our strategic plan goals or our board goals with respect to achievement. And we're very, very proud of that. But I think it is important to take a brief moment to kind of give a summary of the gains that we've made over this past year because the centerpiece of our district's strategic plan is continuous improvement, right? We want that rate of improvement to be as high and as wide as possible. But sometimes that rate of improvement is more incremental, but the goal is continuous improvement. So what I will share with you is that with respect to our advanced placement achievement, we saw increased AP exam achievement, and that's been true over the last two years where we've seen an increase of six percent and five percent respectively for the two previous years in the proportion of student scoring at the highest levels, levels three, four and five. We're very proud of that because those are strategic focus areas for us, codified in our strategic plan. And we're seeing the achievement occur. I want to give a shout out to Bethany Gillis, who's not scheduled to be here tonight. But of course, you know, she's our Advanced Academics Coordinator. We also have seen a resurgence and an increase in our number of AP scholars named. In many years in the past, and we've had, we've had that high number over a hundred, but that's decreased, that had decreased over several years, but we've gotten back to a hundred and four for this past year, which is an increase over eighty for the previous year, which is an increase over sixty six the prior year to that. So that's exciting that we have, we've seen a resurgence in our performance in terms of the name of AP scholars being named. We've also seen an increase in the number of Governor's Honors Program nominees and semifinalists, and we're excited about that. There had been a dip over in the prior years. We've seen, we've seen this past year, the highest number that we've seen in about four years. Also, I'm very excited that all three of our district's high schools were named AP honor schools this past year. Now that has been the case in the past, but for many, for the last several years, it had not been the case. But now all three of our schools are back on that AP honors list and we're excited about that. Also to pivot to gifted, you know this because I've talked about this before, we've seen, we've seen increased gifted eligibility and enrollment, right? Because you have to see an increase in eligibility before you see an increase in enrollment. And we're very, very excited about that. And that's intentional as well. Years ago, I directed there'd be a gifted task force that Dr. Nadine Campbell, one of our assistant superintendents for elementary schools led. I know several of the people who are here tonight was, that you were involved in that. But we wanted to make sure that we reviewed our service delivery models to make sure we were maximizing funding. And more importantly, we're making sure that our students are prepared to demonstrate their proficiency at the highest levels on state assessments and other assessments, talking about our gifted students. Because if there were a population, we want all of our students to succeed at the highest level. But if there were a population that we would reasonably expect to be performing at that level three and four, it would be our gifted students. And so what I'm excited about is we're seeing the increased eligibility and the increased enrollment. And we're also seeing gains as well. And also I want to add this because this is important. We can't get away from this. Prelimarily, it's been conveyed to me by Ms. Gillis that we've seen an increase, Phil, Keith, in funding, in FTE funding for gifted. So we're excited about that. To pivot to CTAE, and we're looking at this past year, but we're seeing a multi-year trend with all of this data in terms of multi-year increases. But we've seen an increase in our CTAE course offerings, an increase in our CTAE pathway enrollment. We've also seen an increase in CTA pathway completion. And we've seen an increase in work-based learning and youth apprenticeship program enrollment. And also we've seen an increase in the number of career-ready diploma seals that are issued for the class of twenty twenty three represents an increase over the prior years. So we're excited about that. When I moved to our Georgia milestones data for two thousand twenty three, and we've had a presentation by our assistant superintendents on our milestones data, we see that in third, fifth and eighth grade, those critical gateway grade levels, we saw an increase in reading from the previous year. We also saw an increase in three out of four of our high school end of course assessments, specifically biology, US history and algebra. We saw a slight decrease in American literature. But what I will add is when you look at the three years, twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three, those three years that follows the height of the pandemic, there's a net gain of twenty points at the high school level in American literature. And also when we look at those other levels in terms of third, fifth and eighth grade reading over that same three-year period, even before you factor in the retest that students have the opportunity to take, we have net gains and those gains only increased after the retest opportunities. We're very, very excited about that. Also, we should know, and you certainly have heard me say this, is that eighth grade students, our eighth grade students last year exceeded the state in reading, English language arts and the high school physical science course that select eighth graders take. Let me put that into a special context for you. Those eighth graders, you know what's special about those eighth graders in addition to the fact that they exceeded both the region metro RISA, which consists of twelve metropolitan Atlanta school districts, of which Rattell County is one, in addition to exceeding metro RISA and the state in reading ELA and the high school physical science course. Also after the retest, our eighth graders last year exceeded the state in math as well. What I want to point out is those eighth graders from last year, do you know where they were in two thousand nineteen and twenty? They were our fifth graders who had their world turned upside down in March of twenty twenty. The fact that we can say that our fifth graders who had their, their fifth grade year, that critical transition year from elementary school to middle school upended by a once in a century global pandemic. As eighth graders, with all the challenges we had, we made decisions, I made decisions with the support of this board on the, in the public health arena that we knew would have some impact on our students' achievement. But we have to prioritize our students' safety, well-being and health first above all else. But the fact that as fifth graders, their world was upended to eighth grade exceeding the state and metro RISA in reading ELA and physical science, that warrants all of our applause. That's really, really impressive and I'm excited about that. And I've communicated this to the principals and to, and to several of our teachers as well. To move on, I've talked about the CCRPI indicators. We're going to be getting that data. I've already connected with Laura Grimwade, who's our part-time federal programs coordinator. But Laura also still hasn't lost her passion for data, so I can ask her to put data together and she does that on a moment's notice. But I've asked her to compile our indicator level data for the last three years, those three critical years from the, from, in the aftermath of the height of the pandemic so that we can see how we've improved on the indicator levels each of those last three years since the pandemic. We don't include two thousand nineteen and twenty because we closed down. There was statewide school closure in March of twenty twenty. We didn't have the milestones assessments administered that year, which, when we, you know, we, that also had an impact on STAR assessment as well. And then, of course, for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, two thirds of our students were remote that entire year. But notwithstanding that, I'm able to sit before you today and share all of these gains, which I'm excited about. I would also point out, you know that Cindy, our Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer, gave an update on our strategic plan progress. And you can see by virtue of the data I've shared that we clearly have far exceeded and surpassed that threshold of continuous improvement. If we just look at our data from the two thousand twenty one, twenty two school year to twenty two, twenty three, and that's a point of pride for us. Now let me pause. Do we have more improvement to make? Absolutely. All of those areas that I've articulated as, as points of strength and improvement and gains are also areas that we know we've got to continue to commit to, to make additional improvement. Literacy, numeracy, social studies and science, that's critical. We know that we always emphasize ELA, literacy and numeracy, mathematics for obvious reasons, right? They're foundational content courses. And we're seeing the benefit of that emphasis, but sometimes, in particular at the elementary level, and that carries over to secondary, that disproportionate and necessary emphasis sometimes results in our seeing some losses or some fallback in the area of social studies and science. But we know that literacy is important because you got to have that literacy to be able to engage with social studies text and science text, that informational text, as well as word problems when we're talking about numeracy. And so what I, what I'm here to say is that we can do two things, two important things at once. We can celebrate happily and excitedly all of these amazing and tremendous and excessive gains that I've articulated to you while also acknowledging that we still have a lot of work to do on our path to continuous improvement. So Madam Chairwoman, I thank you for your indulgence, but I did want to share all of that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oats. I love it when you tell us about those and how we have accomplished those goals that we have set.
For our teachers and administrators.
Yes.
Support personnel.
So the cabinet has provided numerous presentations under information. I want to encourage our board members to please review that information. Would the board like to take a recess at this time? No one? Okay. Please review the October twenty twenty three board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on the minutes in the regular session. There is no old business and there is no new business. The cabinet has provided an overview of the action items for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action items one through four to be placed on a consent agenda?
Can Heather?
A motion to consider the action items under a consent agenda at the regular session has been made by Ms. North and second by Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Is that five, five votes yes and two no? Two with Justin and Sandra Jackson Lett. That's a no. Is that correct? No, we're talking about our votes right now. No. And no for you, Justin. Is that correct? Okay. You got that, Ingrid? Okay. It is on the consent agenda, five to two. Okay. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel? A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. North. Any discussion? All in favor? Is that six to one, six by all, by board members and no by Sandra Jackson Lett? Is that correct? You raised your hand. Okay, so that will be seven to zero. Thank you very much for confirming. It is seven fourteen, and I'm calling the session back to order. Is there a motion to open the session?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
So open.
Board is back in open session. Do I hear a motion to reappoint Dr. Terry Oates as the superintendent of Rockdale County Public Schools for the term of three years, starting July the first, twenty twenty-four, at a base salary of two eighty-five thousand dollars, subject to final approval of the contract? Do I hear a motion? Can I get a second?
Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion has been made by Ms. North and a second by Ms. Palmer to offer Dr. Oates a superintendent's contract for Rockdale County Public Schools. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries four to three. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
A second, Akita.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Jones to conclude the meeting, second by Ms. Palmer.
All in favor.
All in favor? Motion carries. Seven sixteen, the meeting is adjourned.